And Lloyd Erland is joining us on Zoom. Let's see, it's May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four, and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance and the flag's behind you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, board members, conflicts of interest. All right, meeting minutes.
Will we approve the select board meeting minutes from May seventh, two thousand and twenty four?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Uh, warrants?
Move, we approve accounts payable number fifty five in the amount of forty thousand, six hundred and thirty six dollars and ninety nine cents.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
Right, summary.
Looks like the biggest. One on that was the roofing, foul roofing construction for fifteen thousand four hundred twenty five. It was from the windstorm here, but that was an insurance claim that got reimbursed as well, so.
All right, all in favor?
Move, we approve payroll number fifty six in the amount of nine thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighty cents.
Second.
Uh, discussion.
That's a, a regular, that's just regular.
All right, all in favor? Okay.
We should have a motion for the dispersment of funds before we discuss. So I'm gonna move, we approve the request for dispersment of funds and we'll discuss and then decide, right? Fire Department Capital Reserve.
Second, all right, hoping for discussion.
So there's an invoice in the packet, Taylor was gonna be here in here, but couldn't make it, so.
Why?
Looks like it's for equipment from Coastal Electronics.
Beacon.
The ninety third.
And it's from the fire department reserve.
Okay.
Okay, I already have a motion in second.
All right, all in favor? Okay. Uh, old business, uh, there's no update on the Hundred Acre Woods tonight. Uh, and we're gonna review the budget warrant articles.
You have the old business review.
Yeah, and then all to.
Uh, I'd like to discuss the Hundred Acre Woods. My name is Rob.
Let me come back to you.
Yes.
Why don't you, why don't you come in at, uh, public comments?
Public comments, okay, you're not taking action.
Yep, public comments, thank you. So we're gonna review, uh, budget warrant articles, and then also I'm gonna add to our old business agenda. Item C, we're going to, uh, follow up on the, uh. RV and campground ordinance review committee. So I apologize for that not being clear on the agenda, but we, we did mention it last meeting that we're gonna talk about enough for that tonight, so. First, we'll start with budget warrant articles. Bryce, do you want to?
Uh, how we handled it in the budget committee was I just read. Uh, that's the article we read and then. As you guys could recommend it or not. I don't know if I tell you on the year.
Look at the things that are changes, talk about them, I guess. Amy's worked on this for the board.
Well, we've been over the changes a little bit, um.
Yeah.
For it, uh, so this is. We can cap on some of the big ones.
Well, I wanted to hear about the, the reduction in the Asian Home Coordinator line, that's the first I've seen that.
So do we wanna do it by article or?
There's really no changes in the, in the first page that we don't know about. Anybody else see one?
Right, so are you, are you guys recommending it or not? That's what I need to know.
Oh, I see.
A report.
Well, these we've all talked about. So I would say yes.
So you wanna, do you wanna vote?
Just to kinda clarify. In the past, when the budget committee used to meet with the select board, we did this all together.
Yeah.
But this year, of course, it didn't work that way. So the budget committee went through these already and then debated them, worked on them and then voted. Which you can see our vote is under the budget.
Yeah, I see it.
And then what we're looking for is a select board to do the same thing.
Exactly.
Voting on the total amount. And, and then it goes on to the warrant as. Select board approves, budget committee approves.
Right, but in each, in each category.
Why don't we, uh, why don't we take, uh, why don't we hit? In order.
General admin.
You wanna do that?
Yeah, general admin.
Okay, do a motion and then we'll take action.
Okay.
So I, I think.
Move the select board approves the general admin category budget.
I'll second.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Silence, three oh. Move the, um, board approved. The elections and hearings category.
I'll second it.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
I'll make a motion, but then I wanna ask about it.
Sure.
We approve the Health and Human Services budget.
I'll second.
All right, discussion.
I see there's a, there's a. Eighteen hundred dollar-ish cut in this, Bryce, can you tell me about that?
So that was just simply the direct, the coordinator's wage times her twelve hours a week, so. Her current, what she's currently making times twelve hours a week.
So we budgeted more last year.
Yeah, correct.
We budgeted more than twelve hours a week, but it's the, the same wage.
Correct.
Okay. I wonder why, I wonder why we had budgeted more, didn't you remember that? Well, that's what it's supposed, it's supposed to be twelve, twelve hours a week, yeah. Okay.
I, there was.
Yeah, oh, Jimmy, you heard me.
There was some change made. In the process of establishing the budget last year. I remember we had, uh, Pam Gina here to. Talk, and then a week later, something came up, I don't recall what it was, but. There was some. There was some minor change that was made a few, maybe a few weeks into the process.
It's coming back to me, right? With this, the current salary and this twelve hours a week, and I certainly believe that, that now I'm done with.
Is Lloyd online?
He's not.
He's not online?
I think he's having some trouble, I talked to him. He's messing with his. So.
I may, uh, I may recuse myself from this one, so I'm not sure we have a quorum.
That's a good point.
For conflict of interest, we might have to come back to that.
Yes.
So there's not.
Full now, so the time like this?
Yeah, my mother's.
His mother's.
Agent.
Really be a direct.
Yeah.
I think it's, I think just given, given the appearance of the conflict of interest, I'm gonna recuse myself from that vote, but I think we have time to get.
Yeah.
We can vote on this with time.
Yeah.
Okay, let's, let's, I, I will withdraw my motion, I think you should refuse. Um, move, we approve the fire department budget proposal?
Seconded, sorry.
All right, discussion. All in favor?
Will we approve the budget for assessing?
Seconded.
This big increase, O G I is snapping up there.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Will we approve the budget line for animal control?
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Will we approve the budget category for code enforcement and land use board support?
Seconded.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
Move, we approve the budgeted amount for public safety?
Seconded.
Discussion.
Maybe I phrased that wrong, we afford that. I think all those, all those should say move, we approve the budget article for.
Budgeted amount.
The budgeted amount, okay, is that what I said? Can we, can we, should I go back and make the motions again?
I think they're appropriate.
Okay, move, we approve the budgeted amount for public safety.
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor?
Move, we approve the budgeted amount for roads.
Seconded.
Discussion. That's road maintenance. Road agents. Okay, I was thinking for the, the extra. Yeah, okay, thank you.
The Russian tree removal.
Are we?
Uh, we, we have discussion, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Aren't we there?
Yep, yep, you're absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you, Russian tree removal. It was up from the last time, I'm just curious.
That was, uh, this was the storm work, we've been, that was that, I mean, it killed every year. So that was just.
And from what we can see, and what we can see happening in the weather, I think that line's only gonna keep going up, we're gonna have more, it looks like we're having more intense storms.
Yep, I don't disagree with that, this, first, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Will we approve the budgeted amount for transfer station and landfill?
Point of clarification first on that, uh, just to clarify, it was four zero to the. For the article on loans, as like.
Oh, right, it's not, it's not in there, thank you. I haven't even been looking in that column.
Got it. Thank you.
Move, we approve the, uh, budgeted amount for transfer station and landfill?
Seconded.
Uh, discussion. All in favor?
No, traditionally, we haven't made a recommendation for outside agencies, as I understand, and I, I appreciate what you folks did with that this year. Instead of having an article that says, with Jim's point, instead of having an article that says to see what amount the town will raise, which then can be raised or lowered from the floor. This has an amount which could be lowered from the floor but not raised. That's my understanding of that process, so that's different this year.
That town, it doesn't put the, uh. Right, you're right, because the other, the old ones only have the amounts.
Right, and, and it was us to see what, what amount. And, but, but we don't traditionally make a recommendation on this article.
Right, and as the budget committee, we never did because they are clearly town, they're outside.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I think, I don't think we pass it by too and let people decide on that.
Yes, right.
Can I ask that question again? Is that light, light or like?
It should be light.
Light.
It's, it's written wrong, you're right.
All right.
I saw that and I forgot.
Once they have a new.
Okay, where are we?
Uh, recreation, I believe.
Recreation, move, we approve the recommended budget amount for recreation?
Seconded.
Discussion. All in favor? And same thing, budget committee.
Correct, four zero.
Okay.
Move, we approve the recommended account for land and buildings?
Seconded.
Okay, now the increased lines for town office. Bryce?
That was because, uh, when we had moved. In this fiscal year, there was nothing ever budgeted for, so we've never had a line to fund our.
Of course.
Utilities and et cetera.
I get it.
Got it.
I get it.
All right, all in favor?
Move, we approve the budget amount for contingency?
Seconded.
Well, I'm not gonna abstain here, I just, I've said before, I think this item should be considerably higher. But I understand the arguments against that and I'll vote for it, I just wanted to make that point.
Yeah, how much did we spend on our contingency last year? Do you have that in front of you? Um, it's not important, I, I was just curious how much we want.
I have the same concerns, yeah.
Oh, I get, we'll make a motion, right? Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Move, we approve the budgeted amount for capital reserve accounts?
Seconded.
Budget committee's four zero.
Okay, now this is where. This is the large increase. And, um, I guess I'd like to hear, since we didn't get to meet together, the, the discussion about, uh, current. Putting in the current budget versus bonding, so I'd like to hear from the budget committee, since Amy's not here, but.
That was pretty much Eric, okay, the difference of three of them, it was a road committee recommendation. To come up with this to begin with.
Oh, yeah.
And then, as Eric brought up, the point of, well, what would the road committee? If we bonded this year, what would next year's recommendation be? Which would be between four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand, why would we bond a hundred and fifty thousand or a hundred thousand? Oh, that's.
I think the rationale, one, one aspect of that rationale was that. What we've learned is it shouldn't have been three hundred thousand every year for the past decade. And, and so the question was, well, what should it have been? If we were gonna be in, at the right place? And so I think what David just said is our sense was that somewhere to be, at this time, it would be somewhere between four hundred and fifty and five hundred thousand per year. And then Amy was reminded us what the cost of any bond is. There's legal costs involved and. And I think Eric raised the question, why for, if it's a hundred thousand dollars that we're bonding, why would we incur that extra cost?
Well, I guess what you're saying, and it makes sense to me, is that. If it was a one-time bubble. It would make sense to bond it. But if the ongoing expenditure is gonna be at that higher level, then bonding doesn't have the same effect, right? That, that's the point. For example, if the town approved, uh, the internet expansion, that might. That's a one-time expense, and so paying it over time makes sense, but not if the, if the level remains high. Okay, I get it.
And the road committee is going to be there to do an explanation for a time either, so that they know the breakdown.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Okay.
So we have, we have a, we have a motion.
Uh, all in favor?
Where are we? Capital Reserve, okay. Um, revenues and transfers, move, we accept the budgeted amount for revenues and transfers.
Seconded.
Discussion.
Paris and. And we've had totals.
So those are down, I kind of.
Oh, that's right.
I was just following last.
There's no, but it says you recommend it.
We didn't.
Oh, it says four oh, oh, that's, it says four oh there, never mind. If you look at the next page, page seven, oh, that's, it goes to page fourteen.
Oh, it does at the end.
It does at the end.
Okay. Well, we'll accept the money, yes.
In last year's annual report, there was a recommendation, so I was simply following that.
Okay.
Well, the other things that we're looking.
I think lower.
Balance has been.
Well, if, right, if the town has to vote on this, we might as well make a recommendation, so let's, let's, I'm, you know, I've already moved, I'll, I'll move, we accept the budgeted amount. On revenues and transfers.
All in favor? Okay.
And until we're done, I just wanted to make one request of Bryce, something we did before.
Yeah.
Is, and I'd be glad to help with the, you know, spreadsheeting or something, I think. The helpful thing we've done with the budget to present the budget the last few years. Is to make a list of the top ten. Increases by amount, including school. Because otherwise, I think people sometimes get stuck on percentages.
Yes.
And I've seen years where we had extended discussion over a fifty percent increase in some line that actually amounted to four hundred dollars. And I think, I think people look at the percentages, but what's most important is for us to say, these are the top expenditure increases. So that we can focus our discussion in the, in the town meeting on the things that are actually gonna cost the town the most more. Rather than getting stuck on percentage amounts. And, you know, I, cause I, I think, look, but anyway, that would, that's been a helpful thing to do. And it also shows, because the, the two years we've done it, the largest amount increases have been things that weren't actually in the town budget. And so that, I think that's kept us centered the last few years in discussion, it's a useful thing to have.
Uh, do you want to segue and talk about other warrant articles at this point?
Yeah, do we have anything about the town manager?
Right, so the, the town man, the town manager article. In the most recent update, and those who are on the, uh. Town manager committee, I see, pretty good, uh, representation, uh. Surprisingly, I was just updated, I, I spoke with Jim Katzi Fakis, who was a lawyer, who was working with us this winter, and, uh. He said. We do not need to have a special town meeting for the enactment of this, um. Uh, or not, sorry, to, to, to.
When act town.
Yeah, to enact the town management plan, we can do it at the regular town meeting.
So.
I didn't just, I, I asked him specifically to look at the state statute as I understood it and I read it. And he said. Said it may, it has to do, I think it had to do with. The select board, the new board being elected. The Tuesday, you know, the day prior, so therefore we could do it on the floor. I'm gonna accept his advice, cause that simplifies just the confusion there of having a special town meeting right after. And I'm gonna go with it, because he recommended doing it that way.
Sounds like the art, the argument is, which makes sense, is that. The Wednesday vote is more than ninety days before the next select board vote.
Right.
So we can just do it at the, at the regular town meeting, well, good.
So that simplifies one component of that. Uh, the other update on that topic is. We're in a short window of time, obviously, we know this.
To get that article.
Right.
Better.
And I believe we have, we have till the. Fourth, is that our next select board meeting to finalize the warrant, is that correct?
Yeah.
There, yep. Okay. So. The, the advice, and I think we talked about this at the town manager, uh, the town manager hiring committee, and then in other conversations here at the ti, board table, um. Is we need to. Repeal. The existing ordinances. And specifically, the ones that are. Uh. Contradictory or, uh, antagonistic with. The state statute town manager plan, and the, the three ordinances that we need to repeal. And perhaps amend at a certain point, so that's part of this discussion, specifically the treasurer ordinance are the, the Wayne Fire Ordinance. The existing town manager ordinance. In the treasurer ordinance, so we're looking at, I think seventy nine, seventy seven for the fire, and maybe like a ninety six ordinance for the treasurer. Um. Our job, and this was put on us, our job as in the board, was to. Come up with some draft language for that warrant article. To then send back for legal review, uh, prior to the fourth. Uh, in our conversation. Legal. Uh, everybody, I think, those who've been at the last few meetings, said, why aren't you doing it in November? I said, oh, isn't that a common, common statement, but I, I think that we've done enough work over the winter, and I think we have a fairly good handle on this. And I think in an effort to move this process along, to also move the hiring process along. I'm suggesting that we push to get this on the June warrant.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So the other thing that I wanna see is to have it all in one article, we can do that legally, because if we have one article to, to. Uh, repeal this piece and one article repeal that piece, and one article to repeal the other piece, and one article to adopt that, we're gonna get an, an endless wrangling. And what if some things pass and some things don't, I just want one yes or no vote.
And I, and I think, I think in discussion and per recommendation of the, uh, well, not necessarily recommendation, the, uh, the pros and cons list, or the. The findings that the town manager committee put together, uh, there was a strong sentiment to, uh. Isolate our, how to describe that, to, to, to keep. The oversight of the treasurer under select board.
Yeah.
And then also oversight of the fire chief under the select board. Uh, so I think when we, I think when we craft that article. Somehow we need to include that, um.
Amendments.
Yeah, that information.
So I was gonna ask you whether that would be a separate. A separate word, or whether we would end up, um, writing it all up and.
I think to Stan's point, I think if, if we can figure out a way to organize this into one article, yes, no, that would be the simplest.
I think you've got a very clear summary of what we, we want the article to accomplish. And I think we go to the lawyer and say, this is what we want the article to accomplish, send it to us by the next meeting.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think that summary is very good, to repeal it, the other art, to repeal the other things, accept the town manager plan with the following changes.
Okay, and that, and in that way, change the treasurer or specify the treasurer and fire department. Or notices.
Yeah, and if, 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 you know, and if Jim can write, rather than us write it and Jim review it.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's more efficient if we tell Jim what you just said.
Mm-hmm.
And we even have it in the recording. As a backup.
So he can do that.
And then, and then ask him to draft the article, I think that's better.
Yeah.
Jim said he can do the best he can. I, I don't even wanna say it out loud, so it just adds a wrinkle, he said he's on vacation till the third. So he said, get me something in my email box, so when I come back on the third, I can have it. Edited, drafted to send to our meeting on the fourth.
So he can, he can, if you give him direction to, as to what we want.
Easy, right.
Um, then he could just put the language back in.
I, yeah, and he said, yep, he said he can do it.
It seems pretty simple.
And I think that's more efficient than us creating language that, then he has to reshape. You know, it might as well be in legal shape from the beginning.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
If we know, if we know exactly what he wants, what we want, he gets that direction.
Sure.
Yeah.
He should be able to.
And we know exactly what we want.
Right, and it's really not that complicated.
Right, so I think you got a comment from the floor.
Yeah, yeah, I see David and Teresa.
Are you talking about repealing all three of these ordinances and replacing them with just one, that covers three positions, or are you moving that?
Well, that's, that's what I heard from the committee.
Okay.
That, and what I heard from the lawyer, and I'm not, I'm not proposing that, but that's what I heard, that, that was a need to, to repeal the existing things before we could pass the new one.
Three, and then put one back in that covers.
That's my understanding, isn't it?
Did, is there a sense that we need separate ordinances for how the fire department and the treasurer report? That would just be one, we could just put that in one ordinance.
Well, and that, you know, that.
Be one.
You raise a, you raise a good question, uh.
I don't know.
And now, now that I.
I'm not trying to be the expert on this at all, I'm just talking about the process.
No, and I'm, I'm looking at. Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, actually, about what actually needs to be repealed based on the, uh, intent to keep the, the fire chief under the, so. The select board.
Is there, is there?
All right, well, I'm sorry, let me finish that point, because. As it's written now, the select board.
Have to be repealed.
Maybe this one, and that's why we're having this discussion, I wanna make sure we have this correct, this fire, Wayne Fire Ordinance may not have to be repealed.
It's still.
It's because this is under the select board provision, so.
What is the treasurer ordinance?
That's good. I'm gonna, yep, Teresa.
I missed the last three committee meetings, and, uh, through some reason that I got, the committee. Suggested that we're working on a refill and.
Teresa, could you talk a little louder, please, and I have a question?
So, yeah, um, that their fire chief is underneath the, um, town manager's direction. So I missed that part of meeting where that was, decided that wasn't your right collection.
I think.
I see, okay, so can you weigh in on that?
Yeah, so with the committee. Uh, recommended.
Yeah.
So we go with the state statute.
Yep.
But we look at the, the three separate ordinances for the treasurer, the fire chief, um. And the town manager, so the town manager gets to deal, because that.
Yep.
We tend to look at the other to make sure we understand them, but we did not, at any point, say we. Recommended repealing those, those were passed through. In, uh, town meeting processes, and we said, look at them so we understand them.
Okay.
Flexibility of the statute is, we can retain that local.
Right.
Distinction.
Right.
Um, so. When you said repeal and amend, I thought you were going down a line of, after you understood. When you said repeal and amend, I thought you were going down a line of after you understood the fire chief. Or when the treasurer, um, there was a strong recommendation that. Keeping the treasurer under the select board because it seemed like um. Almost a conflict of interest or a ten, conflict of interest to have the treasurer report to the. Town manager because, you know, not to say it's bad, but.
Yeah.
That's, it's financial checking balance.
Doesn't have a check and a balance, it's.
That's not, I don't think that's the current treasure ordinance, because that was when it was elected.
Uh, well, I.
There was a time when that was true.
But I don't think this has ever amended.
It was.
I think.
That's why we no longer have an elected treasurer.
I would agree with that, yes, I agree with that. Hold on, let me finish, let me follow up to make sure there's clarity and we'll come back to that, we've got um. Uh, I lost my train of thought, so we, in terms of, and that's why I actually, thank you, I'm glad that we have. Committee members here because I've been trying to summarize this and get this organized, we've got um. The only repeal then is we understand it is just the town manager.
Right now, but we have to make sure that in the, in adopting the new plan, we maintain. Select board authority over the treasurer.
Right.
So what is, uh, it's been a while since I I I looked at the treasures. Or the town manager, does it not? Specify anything but a ten to come in during the state organs. Where's the whole statute?
I had thought that the default in the state statute was for the select board to hire the town manager and the town manager to supervise everyone else. There lots of people in this room who know that better than me.
Maybe, maybe. What I'm under, maybe I under, if we repeal this, these can still stay in standing and support how we want. Our organization to work at this point. Would, I'm holding up, sorry, I'm holding up the uh treasure ordinance and Wayne fire ordinance. So we could, that would simplify obvious, uh, I, thank you for talking that through. I think, so we've really only actually repealed this.
Except that treasure ordinance doesn't say. Thank you, that's, that was the elective.
Yeah, that's not.
Yeah, so this does, and that goes back to my first thought about amendments.
That one was amended to shift from elected to appointed. When we did, I forget when that was, but I I remember it.
But it never go, the, the ordinance itself never got changed.
The amendment never got recorded? Oh, my goodness.
I think it's in the record, I know it's in the record from like oh seven or somewhere in that.
That sounds about right.
Check, somewhere in that zone, but I think it never was amended. Here, at least in the.
I have no rec, I've dug. Oh, it passed town meeting and it's in the minutes, but it never got written into the ordinance, the, the, the ordinance that we have on paper.
I believe, that's true.
I get it, but I know it passed because that was there, other people here in the room.
So that's, that's a question about, I'm sorry, we got, that's a question about.
It sounds like the, the, the urgent need is to repeal the town manager ordinance, pass the new one and. If in passing the new one, we have to specify a line of authority to the treasurer, then we sure.
Right.
Yeah, so that it doesn't override what we had before. Right?
I think so, yeah, this is the, the urgent here, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna go to Mary and then I'll come to you guys, yes.
I've, I, I also skipped something here. Why, what is the benefit? Why are we choosing to have the fire department? Slash fire chief report to us and not report to the town manager when the town manager has. The responsibility for the budget and the fire department is clearly in the budget.
Right.
The treasurer, I think that there's a, a, a real point of checking balances. Um, but I'm just not sure why and how we got to that point.
No, that's, I think that's a good question.
Not either.
Uh, I, I, I don't know if it's a historical relationship in Wayne that's. You know, retained that, the organization um. I mean, I know, I know, a- 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 anecdotally, we were advi- uh, I shouldn't say we're advised in certain areas and I, I. Taylor's not here to weigh in on this, uh, and I, that would be helpful um. I was, there was certain history where that was recommended that the select, the, the, the town manager. Does oversee the fire chief and it had to do with uh. She, a change of accountability and liability.
Uh, and, and it, uh, Teresa also noted that it works well that way if they add and we, then that would, that would seem to. That would seem to make. Everything cleaner and li- liability or authority and accountability and it doesn't seem like um. You know, in the very short time that I've been doing this, so we've really gotten involved in what the fire department does. And if the town manager had a handle on that, that was part of his charge, that makes more sense to me.
Let me make a suggestion, Stan. I think it might be prudent to have two articles. I think it'll be prudent to have one article that folds in the new town manager plan, including the independence of the treasurer. Now vote on that. And then to have an article drafted that assigns. A place for the fire department within the hierarchy that people can vote yes or no on. So that, because.
What, what, and what does the current one say?
I know there are gonna be feelings about this one way or the other. And it's some, it's something that should be discussed, but I don't want that to sink or float this whole article change. And so we need to hire a, uh, no, no criticism of you at all, Bryce, but we need to get you off the hook and we need to, we need to move on, right?
Well, we also, yeah, and, and we, I mean, I think it's important to think about structure and not the, the people involved.
Right, right, so maybe we need to split off the, the, the article about where the fire department gets them higher.
And current, the current one says that the fire chief reports to the town manager.
I think the, the, I think the current, the, the, the. Things in, in place may be predated even us having a town manager, it's a while back.
The fire, the fire chief reports to the select board.
Okay, yeah.
But that, I think that may have been passed when the, when the uh, when we didn't have a town manager, so. Anyway, so does that make sense to do, to do?
Got it.
A second article about fire department, that way we can discuss it.
I think that, I mean, that seems.
We can even discuss the wording of that at the next meeting.
Right.
If it's that controversial, I guess we should.
Well, that's the question, right, we don't know. And I don't wanna say because we don't know, let's not go ahead with this.
I agree. I'm gonna go to Ken and back to you, Teresa.
Um, but I think Stan's proposal matches with what the committee was thinking. Which was, we felt that this treasurer should be separate from the town manager for fiscal reasons. But that they. We recognize that the, the fire chief, the fire burn. Would be controversial. And that, that we weren't gonna make a recommendation on where it should be, just identifying to you. That it need to be dealt with in some way.
Forgive me, I'm gonna get some water, I'll be right back, help us.
Okay, uh, Teresa.
Yeah, I just, um, the other thing that came out with the interviews I had with the other two town managers is that. The town treasurer is an employee of the town, which I, I don't think. The both town managers felt very strongly that an employee should be supervised by the town manager. Whether or not it's, the town manager shouldn't have any. Um, shouldn't have any responsibilities related to handling. But I, I think it's important. What they felt very strong about was that town manager should have supervision of any of. Actual employees that have worked in the office, if it's a separate person that's contractor or. I, I don't know what whose, whose position is now, but I think it's a little sticky to have somebody. Who are gonna, if we are gonna hire somebody as a treasurer, but they're not gonna be. You are gonna supervise all their activity and then I wouldn't come in and give them a call for you, I think that's. It's, I, I would look at the state statute and see how treasurers are structured in other towns. I, I, being somebody who supervises five other people, I, unless I have a contract, I don't think that.
He, he is not an employee, so we just wanna give him a stipend, the four thousand dollars, particularly the treasurer's stipend.
Okay.
No benefits, nothing else.
Okay.
I think in other, the other towns, they actually not, might not turn to them. So that's, maybe does the difference, will be one. So that, that would make sense.
I think the independence of that person is important, so.
Obviously, they're gonna have the state statutes, but we know, okay, no, I, I mean. I think that's a reasonable. Organization based on. The work the committee did. I see.
We don't need to take a vote on this, we're just giving you direction.
Yeah.
We've already voted on that. Accepting the.
The recommendation, oh yeah, absolutely.
Respectfully, like, as a team, we met a couple of times, voted amongst ourselves, it was accepted by us all, so we can work that. To back in history since the grand old age, um, and then the language you want on. Repealing the town manager ordinance and adopting the state statute, the town, the statute of state. With the, we got the citation in the. In the minutes.
Right. Okay.
You're writing one article then, right, Stan? Well, I'm just thinking about the warrant, when we're putting the warrant out, that'll be just one article.
That's what, that's what I, rather than to have a separate article repeal and it, but, but, but the idea of a separate article about where the fire department falls is a good idea to. I just, you know, sometimes we, we've done this little bits and pieces here and here and here, and it always gets into a tangent. I just wanna make it as simple as, as direct as we can, that's, that was my, my only point.
And include the treasurer with the town manager.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, so that's the other, the other piece of that, in case we have to include wording about treasurer in that article, it should be in the article.
Yep.
As long as we have a trust, we have a select word to keep. In review, that treasure.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so.
And the, 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 just to under, right, to underscore why the treasurer. Is because this, this. The state statute puts all management control in the town manager, so that's important. All right, thank you, everyone, thanks for contributing, I, I let off, thank you, that's great.
Committee charge? Okay, but make the tent, please, he's standing there.
Well, yeah, David, what's your question?
When you're, you're, you're putting articles on the warrant. Would you, would you please put an article as we did years back? Um, to see if the. To authorize, uh, see if the town will authorize the selectman to borrow in anticipation of taxes. It has to be an article by itself.
Right.
You need money before we bring taxes in in October, you guys can go out and borrow a quick note. The last few years, we haven't had this in a, in a warrant.
Really? Wow.
So I, I feel strongly that we need to put this back in a warrant, at least at this point you got.
Absolutely, what is the wording?
See if the town will authorize the select board to borrow in anticipation of taxes.
Yeah, it's been, it's been in the warrant for forever, but it, you're saying it got left out, but going back. Going back, I remember voting on it every year, yeah.
But not recently, not last five years.
Thank you, that's very important.
You got that?
Yeah, so MMA gives us the.
Okay.
Articles, okay, that'll be easy.
Yeah, and as our, while we're talking about articles, the other thing that I remember being uh objected to last year. Was a dramatic increase in interest on unpaid taxes. So it, assuming that we're not gonna, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna. Unless, we're not gonna raise that interest rate unless there's serious.
That, I'm pretty sure that's state regulated and it was just that the previous town manager had put it at the max recommendation.
Got it.
We don't have to do that, but there is a.
There's a ban.
Yeah, so I gotta look into that.
Okay.
I've got one more warrant article update, uh, that I'd like to talk about and I'll try to summarize it as efficiently as possible um. It's related to last, I think it was last meeting, we talked briefly about um. Tax required property or our ordinance, our policy.
And the news was the state ordinance.
Yeah, so current, currently the town of Wayne has a tax required property ordinance, however. As a result of changing state statute, that ordinance is no longer uh aligned with state statute. So. There's a, again, it's. It's sort of hot off the press, I mean, we knew it was coming, I knew, I knew it was, we knew it was an issue, but i- in terms of. Possibly for this June warrant um. A suggestion would be to repeal. The town tax required property ordinance and for a moment in time operate under. The state statute tax required property ordinance. And in, in one article, and then the second article would be to. Have a, a, a reoccurring authorization for the select board to handle tax required property. Which is calm, it's, it's how it happens now, but our, our ordinance, again, it sounds, our, our ordinance is not. Align, it doesn't work, so I can. I can flesh that out in some more detail, I've got some draft articles that, uh, or, I'm sorry, a draft article that um. Is, is the, the, I, I may have sent it to, I don't, I don't remember if I sent it to you, maybe I sent it to Bryce, so Bryce has seen it. Again, from Jim Kay, uh, no, sorry, this is from uh, Phil Saucier, Saucier or about um. How to handle tax required property.
And you're saying we're just gonna, we just align it with the city, with the station?
Yeah, because our, he said that generally towns, similar to what David's point about borrowing money, we're supposed to have a reoccurring article. Yearly that addresses how to handle tax required property, so we don't, so we don't have to go to uh. Uh, legislative vote every, in each situation if a tax required property were to come, to come across the table. So this particular warrant article is suggesting, again, is a, is a, it's a reoc- reoccurring ordinance, this would be the first time we've done it in a few years. And then moving forward, uh, we would have this on our, our warrant every year.
So that every year the board is authorized to take these actions within that year.
And we have a, and then he, he, he's, he has in the, the legal advice is suggesting. After we do this, then we can work on our town policy for tax required.
Policy is, their policy is passed by the select board within that authorization. Yeah, well, that makes sense.
So.
So is that, are we in policy now or ordinance?
We're in ordinance now, it's not a requirement or law that we are in ordinance, he said, most towns use. Not that we have to be like most towns, I'm just giving the example, he said.
Enabling authority from town meeting and then a select board.
Correct, and then there's a select board policy.
That makes sense.
Uh, but I can uh. Do my best to coordinate with Bryce, and again, it's gonna be. Action packed on the fourth.
Well, is this, is this an urgent action?
Have it twenty twelve, this is our warrant from twenty twelve.
Yeah, it's on twelve, okay, so it's, we've lapsed.
Is, is this because we had ordinance, but is this something that has to be done this year because of the change in state law? Or something that would be nice to do this year?
That's a, that's a good question, um.
So if we don't have to do it this year, we got enough going on then. But if we have to do it, let's do it.
Is there a lot? Raising a lot, I'm not covering it.
That's right, yeah. I don't know if I can pull up that article. I, I believe it, I, that's a good question, I don't, I don't have the answer to that question. If we have, if we're obligated to, I thought, originally I thought it was to align with. To help us better align with this incoming change to tax required property.
State law says one thing and our town ordinance says something else, that's gonna be messy.
Well, the other.
Probably do it.
The other thing too is that uh, is we have just contracted. With the company that is supposed to be.
Codification.
Clining, right, all of our ordinances with, with state statutes and they should be highlighting, I mean. They told us they would be highlighting all the steps so that.
Yeah.
Um, that would stand out and I would. I would guess that that should be one of the things they catch and give us some direction.
Yeah.
But again, that doesn't exactly say whether it has to be done this year or not.
Do you have it?
I can send on this.
Yeah, that's what I was, so is it general art? Yeah, that's what I was. So is a general article that apply, I'm gonna just read. I'm gonna read you. It's a general article that applies to all tax required property would need to be on the warrant each year parentheses uh. See if the town will vote to authorize a select board to dispose of tax required property as they deem in the best interest of the town. Except the board shall use the sales process and, oh, I see. So it's. It's updating the language for the new law. Yeah, so the board shall use the sales. Process and thirty six MRS ninety four three C if they choose to sell the property to anyone other than the former owner. For sales to someone other than the former owner, if the board chooses to retain tax acquired property for municipal use, excess sale proceeds as defined in. Above number MRS shall be returned to the former former owner. So it's different. It's up, it's changing it.
We should definitely have that in because that's what the law says.
I think I. I mean, it's a matter of writing out the ordinance and putting it up for vote.
Uh, just the art, yeah, writing the article.
That's an article, which we have it, we have it out there.
So I think this one's actually simpler than.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we have the wording.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
The only question is, since we have an ordinance that conflicts with that.
And that's where the.
Whether we have to, whether we have to also. We've gotten in a mess with this before, you know, passing things and then not repealing. What came before. So the only question is uh it probably prudent to repeal the other ordinance and have this.
The same way that we're doing with the other.
The same thing we're doing, otherwise they're gonna convict each other.
Yes, that was the advice repeal and then replace.
Well, then we should be definitely.
So we can do that in the same word, right?
Uh, either maybe.
But so that that's, that's what I have on warrant articles from my desk.
Excellent.
That's a lot of work.
Yeah, thank you.
Lot of appeal and replace.
Is it, I I'm I don't mean that, no, I'm not even gonna say it. I shouldn't joke. Now that now that I've said that, um. We didn't increase this. And I don't think we should, but man, it's been a year.
Okay. Uh, so other other warrant agenda items discussion.
Well, the other, the other, uh, oh, agenda items, no.
Or or sorry, in this topic.
For the one.
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Okay, um.
But we do have the the ordinance review committee charged to review.
Yep. So last last week, we spoke about organizing a committee uh to review RV and campground ordinance, the the RV and campground ordinance um. We've got a. Draft that Lloyd put together for us as he offered. He's on now as well, so I don't.
Oh, hi, Lloyd.
Lloyd, you there?
So this is a draft. Uh, I'll I'll just read it for folks listening. Uh, the Wayne Select Board seeks interest from Wayne residents to serve on a committee to follow through. On the moratorium that has been adopted for the recreational. Vehicle and campground ordinance. Uh, the ordinance is available on full on town website. You should study it before applying. The committee is tasked with developing recommendations for any needed changes. To the subject section and doing so within a timeline that will allow for a vote. At town meeting in. November. This is a draft. I'm not, I I have to. Follow up on that. Uh, meeting at least monthly will be required. Uh, you'll notice that a codification of the entire ordinance is underway. Uh, concurrently, it will be partly complete when this is done. So that's a rough draft, I think. I'm sorry, board comments.
I just, the only clarification I do is any needed changes to the ordinance. It says needed changes to the subject section, and that's. I think less clear than just to say any needed changes to the ordinance.
And then I do have a question as well. Do we have to go through a formality of charging such a committee? Uh, along with accepting this um.
I think this. Yeah, we should probably have a charge that's the same language, but it's not just seeks interest from, and then we have, we already have an application process.
Right, and I could see it. Really good wording for that, but I can't put my hands on it.
No, the only question is. Timeline that was in November. Um.
Right.
That's.
That's coming very close to one hundred and eighty days.
Right, well, so that really should be, you know, November if possible, I think we should say. The moratorium can be, the board can extend the moratorium. If if it finds that progress is being made.
My my question relates to. Who this committee would present their work to, and it would be my understanding of our. Organization, town organization, that the committee would report to the planning board. And then the planning board would host. Such hearing. It it because the planning board reviews land use ordinances.
I I got it. I just think organizationally. When the select board appoints a committee, the committee reports to select the. And I think we can, and you know, the planning board will obviously be involved in that, and then the planning board can take action on those recommendations. But organizationally, any committee in town is appointed by us and reports to us, I believe.
But but we don't, but we don't have authority. Uh, for land use ordinances.
Oh, we can convey those recommendations to the planning board.
So so um.
I think.
The planning board writes the land use ordinances?
Well.
I mean.
That's that's what's always happening.
And then and then they would bring, they they have their process and hearing, and then um. If they vote to pass. S- you know, a suggestion or, you know, a change or amendment, it comes to our table, and then we put it on the warrant.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, so given that this is a land use. I I'm not, I don't think we have authorization. I mean, I think I think you're, I think you're right in terms of we're charging a committee, but can we charge the committee on? To who they. I I don't think we have, we have no, I mean, we have, under the moratorium, we have uh authorization or or authority to. Respond, react to uh uh.
I I just don't think this is from.
Wouldn't we, I mean, we're responsible for charging committees. Right, so what about, wouldn't we then charge the committee and then charge them to work with the select word? To arrive at an ordinance. A suggested ordinance and present it back to us.
That would be, in in understanding how land use ordinance, that would be the chain that. Seems natural to me, or not nat- it seems legal.
Committee would report to.
The committee would go to the planning board, they would evaluate.
Right.
Uh, have hearings what what they need to do, then when they have a final uh vote.
Right.
They would bring it back to us.
I think it's a distinction that I think so. I don't think it matters. I think we can ask the committee to report to us and to the planning board. I just think we're the ones who we're the ones who are pointing the committee, and I I I just don't think this matters very. And the point is to get the committee working and get the recommendations and get them to the planning board and. What?
All right, one moment. I'm gonna make sure I hear comments.
Maybe that's not true.
Um. I see some people who want to weigh in. Yes.
So just real quick.
Yeah.
I I think it absolutely makes sense for, because you you are organizing this committee, it is under the jurisdiction of the select board. That the committee ultimately reports back to you. You're not voting on whether or not some new ordinance should be adopted. That's, this is a citizen's petition. So once that ordinance is ready to be presented, there'll be a public hearing, and then the town will vote either yea or nay on the new ordinance. Now, if you want to have the planning board have input into that process as part of the committee's work, you can decide to do that. That's perfectly fine. But because this is a citizen's initiative, I think it's up to the committee to do that work, come back to you, present its work to you, and then you take the next steps from there. In terms of public hearing and then scheduling the vote.
It's got a, it's got a.
Yeah, I was just thinking, processing your comment. Yes.
I don't know if we're gonna make a comment or. Uh, yeah, it seems like this was something the authority came through you guys to on moratorium, and we have to. Um, render a decision on an application when it comes into us. Now, if there's a change in the ordinance. We can't be involved. I I'm not sure we can be involved, put it that way.
Okay.
I think the planning board. Evolving language for ordinances is more a tradition than a requirement, as I've understood it.
I.
But I I don't think it matters. I think we can get a report from the committee, and then we can figure out what the best path is from there. The 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 priority is to get the report. I think we can get the report, and then we can work, the board can figure out the next step.
We have a timeframe on when that, I mean, there was a discussion, and I can't remember the exact date, as when did the the first ninety days of the. Uh, moratorium expires.
Oh, is that?
Pretty, it was closer than I thought, because they started the running date. Um. I'm not real sure. We don't have the CEO here. January, January night was when it started.
Well, somebody said. That doesn't mean that's right.
Let's, but. Well, I want to say, I'm gonna say, oh, hold on.
As I understood.
The 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 legal, the legal.
Hold on. We're we're gonna talk for a minute.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna, yeah. I just, I wanted to look at. Some planning board, select board, legal relationships um. And uh again, uh, it's it seems to be the theme of converting to uh legal advice.
I think what is clear is that we have the authority to appoint advisory committees, and we have the authority to receive their recommendations, and that's really all we have to do right now.
That's fine.
Yeah, we've got some other comments on the floor, but I I don't think we should. I think this is all we need to do right at the moment. I agree. Let's see if we have any other comments. Let's do this piece, and then the the new board can figure out what kind of thing.
So the Wayne Select Board's extension. Do we want to uh? Do you want to make a motion on that, and then we can get applications and finalize this draft?
Yes.
Well.
I think this draft needs some.
Just, yeah, so we really, you know, we really need a charge. We can certainly, we can certainly seek applications. Based on this draft.
Yeah.
But what we're gonna have to vote on is a formal charge, which I think is gonna happen after some editing to this.
Okay. So do you think, do you think that in the essence of time, um, we can get to start to solicit applications?
I think we could actually do the editing right now. I don't see any reason that we can't. We can't turn this into, you know, here we are working together. We've got a quorum.
This is just.
Let's just do it.
All right. Let's do that so we can have a final.
All right, so I would, I would say, just in terms of form, this is written as an invitation. Um, the charge is. The charge for the committee starts with. This committee is tasked with developing recommendations for any needed changes. To the recreational vehicle and campground ordinance. And that's a charge, you know, I I think that's that in itself is the charge, meeting at least monthly will be required. Um, I think that's the char- that's the charge. What do other people think? Now, we we can get comments on the floor.
Do you want to, do you want to finish this, then we'll take comments.
That's, yeah, let's finish it.
We're gonna finish the draft, hold your thought, and then we'll come back. On this point. All right, I'll take it. Yep.
The correct title of the ordinance is. The moratorium is supposed to address was the mobile home park. Recreational vehicle, RV park and campground ordinance.
Okay.
So you just have that.
Okay. So the committee charge is to develop recommendations for any needed changes to that ordinance, full name of.
Okay.
Um, and doing so as expediently as possible. Yes, within the term of the mor- within the term of the moratorium. I think that's enough of a charge.
Okay.
Yes, I think so. I agree.
Well, let's just, does somebody have that written down?
Within the term of the moratorium.
Yeah.
That will allow for vote at town meeting.
But what that will allow for a vote within the term of the moratorium, because whether we whether we pass it at a special town meeting or November. The more important thing is that we work within the term of the moratorium. I don't want to get into discussion now about different opinions about when when the first. Part of the moratorium lapses. Really, the only thing we're doing now is is make, writing a formal charge for committee.
Right.
And then sending out an invitation to apply for the committee. Through our mailing list and the and the and the Facebook. Does that work? Marian, have you got that? I was, yeah, but I could write it down.
Uh, I've got what Betsy told me, marble mobile home park, RV park and campground. Ordinance.
Okay. So we need, what we need to say, are you willing to to write, to write?
Sure.
Okay, so what we're saying is, the task for the committee is to. Develop recommendations for.
Needed changes.
Needed changes to the.
Mobile home park. RV park and campground ordinance.
Right. As expediently as possible to allow for a vote. Within the term of the uh moratorium.
Okay, as expediently as possible. Suspect that within the time, the term is going to be pretty expedient, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm unclear on this uh. Deadline for the vote. I don't. Is that?
I don't think we have to, I don't, we have to include that in the chart.
I don't think we do either.
No, just as long as we get the process going, we can clarify.
Work on.
Details.
We want people to work on on needed modifications as expediently as possible, so we can vote on it. And then you need, you know, the the urgency is to get is to get this charged out and to get applications and to appoint people, hopefully next meeting. To begin the process. Once we have applications, yeah? So does that wording work for for all?
If we, even if we need, do we have to wait until next meeting to do?
Well, we have to formally appoint people. And we have to send out, because we have a new process for that. We can't just take volunteers from the floor tonight.
Right.
So so that's gonna be the the next opportunity. Right?
I mean, I was, I I was under the impression, and I I don't want to debate this, this is just a statement of uh. I was under the impression that. July seventh is the sunset on the moratorium, and depending on uh some of the. Uh, justifications for the select board to extend said moratorium would be to demonstrate.
That we've started this process.
Reasonable. And I don't have the legal words in front of me right now, but reasonable, yeah, efforts towards uh. Uh. Responding to the moratorium.
So.
So I I that's what, I guess I want to circle back to the. What we're talking about with this. What did you finalize?
Oh, I guess we'll just say as expediently as possible.
Right.
Okay.
Let's just say that.
Okay.
So we drop out within the term of the moratorium.
Yeah, let's say expediently as possible.
We just need to be working on it.
One of our indicators, one of our indicators, uh, and I don't want to say how often should meet it. People want to meet every other day. It's fine.
But he says at least.
I would, I would leave that. Yeah, no, I I don't disagree with that. I would leave that to however the committee organizes and they're there.
Right, right. So all we need is recommend modifications, needed modifications as as expediently as possible, and I think that's a fine committee charge. We don't even need a date.
Do we have a committee expectations that? They need to, or is that within the bounds of the committee, how they organize chair?
Uh, that's within the bounds of the committee.
Okay.
I were mentioning, you put a planning board member on that committees.
Yeah. It really has, we can invite, we can't put.
No.
It it really has worked well, I think, to have a select board member on committees related to this. I think it is a really good idea to have that tie, so. So we don't need a a a motion for that, but but we should reach out to the planning board.
And did the, did the board adopt in our, we we have the application process, but. We can still appoint if we need. Let let's say we get so many applications back, but we we think that there is a need to get uh another.
Expert.
Stakeholder.
We can always, we can always. Put their request out again, you know.
Well, should we put it, but do we have to put the request out? Are we breaking our own policy, or can we just say, hey, we're thinking of you?
Would you want to apply?
Yeah.
I I think that's.
But um, yeah, I would say the select word um appoints committees. So I think we've chosen to put out applications in the past. But I don't think there's anything stopping us from saying we need your help. Can you?
Right.
Okay.
Would you be willing to give us an offer?
I think just given the new policy, that person should fill out an application.
Yeah. Got it. Okay.
So that we're on an equal footing.
So they have the pay, the pay.
But I I think I absolutely agree that that this could potentially much more productive if somebody from the planning board is on. Is was attached to that committee as we did with the other committees.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's.
But that's not something we can, that's not something we can dictate.
Okay.
We can certainly, we can make that invitation. As I see it. Okay.
Right.
So um. I'm. So, um, I move that we accept the committee's charge as written.
As written, that's, I must say, um, committee is tasked with. Developing recommendations for any needed changes. To the ordinance, mobile home park, RV park and campgrounds. Am I doing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gorgeous.
As.
Um, as expediently as possible.
There, simple.
I think that.
Uh, application. Oh, yes, there's.
We have a second.
A cap of people.
Oh, okay.
Very, we second out if you so choose.
No, no, the question is whether, whether in the charge we should say, um. This, this committee should have uh no more than five members, something like that. Is that what you were asking?
Uh, can we determine that upon receivables applications? I don't think we have to put that in the chart.
I don't think we have to put it in the chart.
So I think there was a motion on the table.
I'm second.
Second, uh, discussion, uh, I wanted to ask about, um, application due date. I would like to set a short window, I think. But I also want to set a re- reasonable.
That has to be in the charge. But I think when we invite people, we should say that we are planning to.
Right.
Appoint people at our next meeting.
Okay.
This, this. We gotta get, we gotta get this on the road.
All right, uh. Any further discussion? All favor?
I don't want to limit us to adding, not adding somebody else to the committee, the time after that, okay, sorry.
All in favor, okay. Excellent, all right, thank you.
Okay, so Bryce, you'll get that out. And I'll, uh, I'll, uh, get it to me through Facebook in case we don't restore that link.
Yeah, okay. Uh, town manager report.
Uh, what I have tonight is a budget committee recommendation, um. The budget committee recommends that the select board issue a request to the county commissioners that. They change the way that the county taxes are paid from a single lump sum payment, either following our town's tax collection dates or in six month increments.
Yeah. And move we, we issue that, or we, the, uh, recommended request.
Second.
Uh, all favor, or sorry, any discussion?
Do, are we going to make that request and then leave them to tell us which one they approve of, or should we ask for something specific?
That's a good question.
Oh, which is better?
Uh, budget committee, do you want to weigh in on this?
To ask that, what others came about is I went to one of the county commissioners. Because we're unique, Wayne collects their taxes in three increments, most towns don't. The county tax was escalated uh exponentially this year. And they want us paid immediately, one lump sum, why did they get to use all of our money? And the county commissioner agreed, but he couldn't get total agreement. The town budget committee looked at it and said, well, if the town budget committees in the towns. And the town board, got the town boards to solicit this. To the county commissioners, they would take action.
So, so my question then is, do we ask them for one or the other, or say, we need one of these? You tell us which is better, that's my question.
Sounds like following the, oh, Aaron.
Yeah, I, I think the discussion committee was that we would ask for it to follow our tax collection.
Yes.
Schedule, but in any event, no more frequently than every six month.
No.
So why don't we ask for what we want and if they say no, we can ask for the other.
Exactly.
Good, okay, that's my, that was my clarification.
Just a supplement that in the discussion, it was also recommended that we reach out to KB Cog, Quebec Valley County Government. To try to solicit similar letters from other town select boards in Quebec Valley.
Yeah.
Try to take the pressure on the commissioners.
Jim.
The one thing that David had learned. Was apparently that a change like this is gonna require a vote of the county citizens. It seems a little unusual.
Yeah, they will have to put it on the ballot in November.
But that's why, that's why we weigh in, that we want to change, that we can get ten other towns to weigh in, that they will also like a change.
I'm gonna.
I would bet that would pass.
Yeah, gee, I wonder how popular it would be for towns to get a break.
I can't imagine the other towns wouldn't want to jump on board, the thing is, they probably are, and it hasn't been brought up to them.
Right.
So let's start.
And that's plenty of time to get it out and do education.
Okay, so I move we follow this recommendation and make the request based on our, our payment periods.
Is there a, uh?
Second.
There's second in, uh, discussion, is there a suggested like timeline to expedite this that? Soon, I just, is it something that could happen? I'm, I'm nodding to you, this is.
Yeah, no, I think this will be a, a pretty quick.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's, okay, so.
Better because then, you know. We're gonna have an election in November, if the county has to vote on it, it, it would, if we can get it out there and get some recognition, we can. Have votes in November and maybe get some.
Okay.
Well, thank you all for bringing this to us, you know, this is something that would, yeah.
All in favor, excuse me.
All in favor, yeah, yeah.
Okay, great.
Who, um, who writes that letter?
Yeah, it's the town manager and then we sign it. Not, not to add anything to your plate.
That's what I was.
Okay.
Uh, uh. Anything else from the town manager? No, great, uh, board member reports. Uh, public comments.
Yes, sir. Hopefully I can make some of your. Issues discussed tonight a little bit easier. My name is Rob Bettengill. I'm the son and executor for the estate of Robert H. Bettengill, the previous owner of Hundred Acre Woods. Uh, my attorney advised me to come to this meeting tonight. And with the intention of setting a meeting with the appropriate parties to negotiate for the acquisition of the property. It's land that had been in my family for a hundred and fifty years. And I think that this will be the most beneficial and expedient way. In light of the laws that has recently been passed. I'm at your disposal for setting a meeting with whoever it needs to be.
So this probably is gonna require legal input too. So.
I, I, as, as, I think as far as. Further discussion tonight, I, I don't think we can weigh in too much, but I think we can accept, you know. Thank, we, yeah, thanks for coming down, um. And I, I think it, I think at this point. From what I know about the state statute changes and the tax required property laws coming, where the town of Wayne is currently under, uh. Advisement in preparation for s- said changes, um. But I, I don't think we're in a position. For the board to sort of comment directly, uh, regarding the requests that you have mentioned, but I do. I do know that we, we are. Well aware of the changes in, in the, in the law. And, uh, are moving forward to, as, as you recognize i- in some of our warrant articles. Coming up.
Yes.
To, to align with this, with the statutes.
To inform ourselves of what we're able to do legally. And then we have, we do have to have this discussion.
Right, right. So I think, unless there's other comments or if I, if I missed, if I missed, uh.
Who should I be in contact with?
I would.
We should, we should get. We should get back to you, I think. We're, we're the board.
Yeah.
But we have to understand what our legal, uh, what our legal avenues are, what, what we can and can't do. So we should, we should research that and get back to you.
Right, I, I believe, yes, we can, and if, uh. In terms of c- continuing communication, I would suggest it goes to the town manager.
Yeah.
Yeah. I- in terms of questions, emails, communication, go to the town manager and then the town manager r- reports to the board.
What if the appropriate task that you know.
If you're, if you're, if you want to or, or able, uh, uh, you know, you can email, um. The points you raised tonight to Bryce directly to Bryce Cobb.
Town manager.
The town manager, yeah.
Right on, emails right on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, email or phone, you can do it either or.
Yeah.
We'll sit here with it this way, we probably should have a different copy, yeah.
Yeah, I think a written copy would be valuable, okay? I think, yeah, that's it for that, yeah, thanks for coming down.
Thank.
Dave.
Is Lloyd still on?
He is, but I don't know if he's able to speak.
If I were to look back and vote on that one article you missed.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Can you contact him anyway and find out if he can, if he's heard a vote?
Right.
Yeah.
I thought I was right here.
No, that's a good point.
I think he hasn't been in all the discussion. So I really.
He was at the board meeting, he was with us when we did this.
Okay, so he has enough information, you're saying.
Oh, I see, yeah.
That's what Mike said. I think the requi-.
Well, we're waiting for that.
Specific requirements for remote voting. And I think that, I, well, I think that there were specific requirements for remote voting. Is that the person has to have been in, uh, in connection through the entire discussion of the process. And I think even though he would have the information, I'm concerned it wouldn't be a valid vote based on that. I was, remember reading over that. Uh, you know, I don't mind expediting this at all, I just want to make sure that the action we take is valid.
Well, is there any? We can take it up on the fourth.
We can take it up on the fourth.
And he doesn't seem, we don't seem to be able to get that.
I don't, I don't want this, I don't want this long.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Be invalid for him and we can do it on the fourth. I, I agree with you, I just.
I get it.
I, I remember that from when we were talking about remote voting, that there has to have been a continuity through the whole discussion of the article.
Other, uh, public comments? Seeing none.
Oh, we, we go to executive sessions. Um, and it's possible that there'll be action as a result of it, it said here, so.
So we're going to executive sessions.
Okay.
So it might, uh, if, if folks are.
Do we have to make a motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna let people know that we're going into executive session.
Action if they want to come back.
Yeah, if you, uh, if you want to hang out in the parking lot or.
If you should want to come back.
Let us know if it's raining, they can go in there.
To the extent you're allowed to, the nature of the executive session.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah, so I can come, if, I'll take, I'll poke my head out there after.
Move, move, we enter into executive session for.